I'd like to call the meeting to order. We can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the people of the land for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of May 4th or May 18?
I forgot to do my revisions for the 4th, but can I put them off for a couple of days or no?
I guess so. We'll table the -- are we able to table them twice, Eileen, since we tabled them last time?
I don't see why not.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the 18th.
Okay, second, or any changes, alterations? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Jen, I'd like to thank you for those minutes. They were very detailed and you did a great job on them. Appreciate it. I know there's a lot of stuff in there too.
Okay. Tax collector. We have our refunds. Do I have a motion to accept the refunds?
So moved.
Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Stan? The request for interest waiver. I know we have one here, but I have another one that came in a little late, and so I'm wondering if we could add that to it or pass it on to -- we need a two-thirds vote to be able to put it on the agenda. Look at that.
I'll second that.
Did you see this one?
Yes, I did.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Would you like to talk about it?
As far as the interest waiver for 178 Main Street, this is a rather unusual situation in that the current owner came in in January to make the payment and was told that the payment had already been made, and she thought her attorney had made it. So she did not come back till April, and by that time, a refund had been requested by the prior owner who had made that January installment. And because we had told her that it was not due, I felt we should waive the interest in this case, and what we're waiving is just the interest from January to April when the payment was made. And the amount is $72.56. It wasn't necessarily an error, but we just didn't know that the prior owner had made the refund at the time we had told her it was paid.
Right, it's just overlapping of wires with things.
Right.
I would be in favor of that. I'd make a motion to approve.
Yeah, I have no problem with that either. Sure, if some attorney screwed it up, right. Stan?
No comment.
Okay. And then the second one?
The second one I just saw today, but it relates to a request for an interest waiver of $53.91 for 159 Shore Road for Donald Stockman. Their request was made by his daughter. Mr. Stockman passed away at the very end of April when, you know, the deadline for that payment was made. He has an unharmed record for past payments. I did check that today. And under these circumstances, we have in the past, or I have in the past, recommended that the interest be waived for that one quarter.
Right. I would be in favor of that as well.
I'm in favor of that as well, and it meets our past practices too.
Great. Thank you, Stan.
Thanks, Stan.
Okay. Wednesday's pet. This week's pet is Dolly. Excuse me, Missy. Missy, yes, this is the third time I've asked. I've given her the wrong name twice. Missy is 10 to 14 years old. She's spayed. She's docile. She's a terrier mix. And her owner passed away, so that's how she ended up at the pound. So she's looking for a new mother and father and -- or mother or father or whatever. So if you think you could handle Missy, she looks like she's pretty easy to handle. We believe she is housebroken, Jim. So that's Missy. We tried to not have this as a dog and pony show, so Bill McDonough is going to take her out now, but she likes it here. Oh, you've got to get her somewhere.
Wouldn't be the first time.
Oh, he's trying to get a picture. Okay. Next time photos are taken before the meeting. Thank you. Okay. So that's Missy. And you can get her at the Fairfield Dog Pound Animal Control Office, excuse me. It's more than just dogs. You can get cats there, too. And the telephone number there, Bill, is?
254-4857.
203-254-4857. And it's One Ride Highway.
She's a $5 dog.
$5 dog. She's spayed and ready to go. Thank you.
What's her name again?
Missy.
Missy, M-I-S-S-Y.
And Odie, just for the record, last week, Odie actually had somebody want to take her, but it was somebody who was a tenant and the landlord said no. And then somebody else looked at her, but she wasn't housebroken, so he wasn't housebroken, so he didn't get taken yet. So he's really cute if anybody wants a little cute four-month-old dog. Okay, next thing. Discussion consideration and nomination of candidate for interim for a selectmen. Do we have -- I did speak to Alex Trumvicki, and I actually, I didn't speak directly to him. Dick Saxel did, and he sent an email back, which I did receive, and he said while he might appreciate a sabbatical at the moment, he is unable to take that. And Joel Green said that he is not willing or able to take it at the moment either. Is there anyone else you've already vetted that you've spoken to that would like to take this whom you'd like to bring up who's new?
New other than the eight or nine people I brought up? I guess I'd have to go back to Mr. Bremer.
Okay, he's not new. I'm not taking him, so let's move on.
Well, I understand we only have a couple more days to do this, and I agree, I don't think that we're going to be able to come to an agreement in regard to this. You know, you and I are just at an impasse. And the impasse is basically it's either Mike Tetro on your side or nobody else. And I've tried to put up eight or nine names and--
And all of those people said no.
Not all of those people said no. We could go try to get Mr. Bremer down here right now and ask him whether--
I did talk to Mr. Bremer and--
And I've talked to Mr. Bremer, and he said that if you and I chose him to do it, that he would fill the seat for the next four to five months.
Well, that's not what he told me. And right now, we -- our Democratic Town Committee, the process is we put forth a name, just like you were put forth, I was put forth. We put forth a name per charter. The state statute say that if we can't come to an agreement, it goes to the electors who are the registered, you know, the Democrats who have won elections and are not in recurring seat terms. And we vote. And then if that's not acceptable to everybody, then somebody could try to collect 5% of the signatures and hold another election, a special election. But right now, we did the process, as we followed the process, we talked to people, we had a unanimous decision in our Democratic Town Committee meeting for Mike. Again, all of the people that have been mentioned just about, there might be one or two that weren't on the town committee, but almost every one of them is on the town committee, and one would presume that they were supporting Mike since it was unanimous. So at this point, I'm willing to put Mike's name up again, but that's who I'm willing to accept.
Well, just confusion regards to Mr. Bremer. If he's still in the building, I'd suggest we both forget him.
Well, actually, no, I don't suggest we get him because right now, last time, no, let me tell you why I don't suggest it. Besides the fact that he's told me no, what I'd like to say is that, and what I did say last time, is, you know, he's great at the role that he performs. You need both roles to go and find somebody to fill that seat. You know, you said, oh, we could find somebody else. In the course of the four or five months, there are so many things going on between trying to maintain the AAA bond rating, we're going up to, you know, bid the bonds, we have the train station coming to close towards November. There are so many things that are up in the air right now that we need somebody in there who's going to be able to take it forward and stay with the course. So at this point in time, I'm not willing to go--
I keep hearing about this AAA bond rating as though the choice between you and I make right now is going to matter about whether we get downgraded or not. If that's a problem, if you think that we're going to be downgraded over this decision, I want to hear those arguments, and I'd like to hear them from Mr. Hiller if he's in the room. Because whether we're going to be downgraded on our bond rating has nothing to do with this process. It has everything to do about the town finances. And I think those town finances are in good order, and I think the budget that we just approved puts it even in better standing. But, you know, Mr. Hiller, is there anything about choosing a first selectmen on the next day that's going to change our bond rating or put us at risk for--
I think there are a lot of--
--bond rating?
I didn't say it's going to change our bond rating. What I said is that these are issues that are coming up. Somebody needs to meet -- isn't next, what, July? You're going to be meeting with one of the -- that's not Moody's, it's one of the others. Standard and Poor's.
Ten and twenty scheduled for July 6th.
So, you know, having somebody who actually is in for a while, can discuss the issues, I mean, the presentation is substantial. It's not just, you know, just throw anybody in there to sit there for the day.
We're not throwing anybody in there. We have Mr. Hiller who's successfully guided us through this process.
But it's nice to have some consistency and look like stability.
Number of times he's led us through there, and he's going to be guiding any first selectmen that sits in the seat, even if it was you.
Right now.
So I don't understand why, you know, if there's some confusion regards to Mr. Bremer, we don't ask him to come before us or ask him to come before us tomorrow and have a special meeting?
No, we don't, because I brought the name of the person that was recommended by our party. He was there for those meetings, and I'm going to -- that's the only name I'm putting forward right now, okay? And I don't think this is the role for him. I do agree that he has a very important role. He serves it well. I don't want to move him from that role.
And I understand it's the name that's before to your party, unfortunately, when you read the charter, it doesn't say that the Democratic Town Committee makes that decision.
Well, it's been customary.
It says that you and I have 30 days. I've tried to negotiate. I've tried to bring other people. I've not just tried to slam someone down your throat and say, is this person or whatever.
Well, the only person that you've actually vetted is Mr. Bremer supposedly, but I've gotten a different answer than you have, and it doesn't really matter, because I did go through the process. And in the past, for everybody, including you and including me, the party has recommended somebody. In the case of you, Ken actually had another name, we all know that, and then the party said, what, you won't take who we give you? So we said, okay, we'll take who--
And Ken vetted me on the exact same issue.
Well, guess what?
Ken vetted me on whether I would run for first selectmen. He wanted to know that before he would actually put my name forth, so--
I was not there for that, and I'm not going to continue this argument. If I wanted to argue this much, I'd get married again. So let's just move on to the next one.
You're not going to propose?
Certainly not. Resignation. No, not my own.
I would just like to state for the record, and I think in what we've proven during this last 28 days is that this process that's in the charter can't work. It's just never, it's never going to work. And I think that the charter should be changed. I think this should be reviewed during charter revision. I think that charter revision should come up maybe after the next election, and that a new system be put in, because this has been kind of a complete waste of time. And it's, whether it's your side of the aisle or my side of the aisle, this decision's always going to come up the exact same way. And it's, that's the way I see it. I think that the town should have a special election for their first selectmen within 30 days, and that we should work with charter revision to figure out legally how we can do that with the statute, so--
I don't necessarily disagree with you, but a lot of it is--
Hopefully, the minutes will show that, that we tried to do something, and where the impasse is. It's just, it's, I cannot, you know, we've got a couple more days before I am out of the process, and I understand that. But just because that process is coming to an end, and because I will no longer have a role in that, doesn't make me feel that in my gut I should then just go along with your decision, even though the 18 electors, who are all members of the DCC pretty much, will make the exact same decision that you want to do.
Well, you know, it's not me, it's the process. There's a process. We followed it. Our party came up with a name. Regardless of what happened with you and Ken, I wasn't there, I don't know about that. I never asked you anything about it. I could have easily said no, and it would have had the same result. So, you know, I could have said, no, I'm not going to support anybody but Jim, you know, but Kevin.
Do you understand my point, how the first selectmen is different than any other position?
Well, I don't know that it's any different than this selectmen, because there's three of us, and the point about having the three people is that two can always outnumber one, and there were plenty of times you and I voted against Ken.
Oh, there's plenty of times, yeah.
So, you know, at this point, you've said last time, this is probably the second time that we've disagreed on something. So I'm not saying the process should be exactly as it is, and I'm not saying it should be different, but we should discuss it, I think, at the time the charter's reopened, and then find out what can be altered. I don't know what happens with the state statutes. I'm not a lawyer, you are. But, and we know about that stuff. But anyway, regardless, if you want, if you think that's important to change, and it very well might be, then that should be brought up at that time. But right now, let's move to the next item, because we're a little late in starting, and we have now resignation of conservation commission. Landon Storrs served us very well from November '07 to November, she's scheduled to go through November 2012. She's unable to continue, and she sent us her resignation. We want to thank her very much for her service to the town. Appointments. To consider and act upon the following appointments. Flood and erosion control board. This is very exciting, because one gentleman said he was interested, and then he found a friend who was also interested, and they have impeccable credentials. So would you like to make any motions, or would you like me to?
You can make the motion.
Okay. Tim Di Bartolomeo has a bachelor's in University of Connecticut in engineering, civil engineering, and he's had 22 years of experience in structural engineering and the design of waterfront structures. He maintains extensive expertise in the design of buildings and other structures such as bridges, retaining wells, seawalls, bulkheads, and port facilities such as bulk unloading terminals. And so he is there to, he's a Republican to replace Mr. Tarek, who resigned for the period of now through November 2012. Would you like to second that nomination?
Sure, I second it.
Okay. Could we just take through the first and second of the two?
Is he here?
Is he here? Wait, he's no, I don't know about Tim. Oh, I'm sorry, Tim, could you stand up, please? Just a second. Thank you. And then, hi, and thank you for contacting Mr. Kenny. William Kenny is the principal of the firm, William Kenny Associates. He has a bachelor's degree in landscape design, a master's in environmental management, concentration, and thesis work in ecosystem ecology, hydrology, and restoration, and postgraduate studies in soil science. Both of you have wonderful backgrounds, and for flood and erosion control board, I can't think of anything better, so I'm very excited for that. And Mr. Kenny would be filling a term through November 15th, and he's unaffiliated, he's replacing a Democrat, Kevin Hopkins, who went on the RTM. And we thank you for being willing to serve.
Glad to do it.
Thank you very much. You have the time to do it, no problem?
We'll make the time.
Ask a busy person to do the details.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to? So I'd like to make a motion also to accept William Kenny.
William Kenny, yeah.
Second that?
I second that.
All in favor for the two people for flood and erosion control?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Then we have solid waste and recycling. We have, let's see, Mark Patton from Valley Road. Mark, are you here? Don't see him here right now. He's a communication science major and marketing and creative development executive, and he's replacing Betsa, who is a Democrat who had resigned and would serve through November of 2012, and this requires RTM approval. Would you like to make a motion?
Sure. Make a motion to approve Mr. Patton.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
And then, let me get this sheet together here, sorry. We have another wonderful candidate, Special Project Standing Building Committee. This also requires an RTM approval. Is Jane Purcell here? Jane? Jane has an incredible background, about 15 years' experience in project management consulting. She's been an assistant supervisor, project engineer, she's managed her own company, project management consulting company, and one of her major projects was the New York Public Library, the $35 million renovation of the performing arts section, so it's pretty impressive. And presently, she is the head teacher at a nursery school, and I wish I had a child in that nursery school. So Jane, thank you very much for offering to serve. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, and I forgot, was Al here, Kelly? Al, would you like to say something? I'm sorry.
Just that we're very excited to have her going on the project. Commissioner was love the resume and excited about that.
Great, thank you very much. I'm sorry to put that a little out of order, I'm trying to speed up here. Okay. Thank you very much for being willing to serve again. And she, use my second page here, she was replacing Miriam Frank, right? So thank you to Mrs. Frank and to Mr. Betsa and Kevin Hopkins and Mr. Tarek for their service. Request for the first selectmen resolved that funds be transferred from an increase in grant revenue in the amount of $5,675 to cover the cost of programs sponsored by adults and children to gather Fairfield Substance Abuse Prevention Control, and further resolve that the first selectmen is authorized to make, execute, and approve on behalf of the town of Fairfield any or all contracts or amendments thereof with Regional Youth Adult Substance Abuse Project, RISAP. These costs are 100% reimbursable by a 7/1 to 6/30/12 State of Connecticut Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services grant to local prevention councils administered by RISAP. Is Jen talking about this?
No.
Oh, Lauren, I'm sorry, Lauren. Anything you'd like to add?
No. Do you have any questions about it? I mean, this has been going on, I think it's the 12th year, and we're really excited about all the programs that we support, and I'd be happy to give you details if you want them.
No, I've read the materials, and it's come out before at the RTM, so I've seen it for about 12 years, so I'm kind of familiar with it, so I--
Motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Director of Health, request from the Director of Health. Should we do number nine and 10 together, or would you like to? Well, there's actually 11, too. Read them separately.
I don't care. We can do them all together if you want.
Okay. Resolve that an increase in the estimated revenue for federal grants in the amount of $5,000 be made to cover the cost of Fairfield's continued efforts to further develop the Fairfield Eastern Medical Reserve Corps and to promote the integration of the MRC unit into the local public health and emergency response system, and further resolve that the first selectmen is authorized to make, execute, and approve on behalf of the town of Fairfield any and all contracts or amendments thereof with the National Association of County and City Health Officials, to conduct activities described in the NACCHO-MRC capacity building award with an anticipated contract period of September 15th, 2011 to September 15th, 2012. These costs are 100% reimbursable. Item 10, Director of Health requests resolved that funds be transferred from an increase in grant revenue in the amount of $7,350 to cover the cost of a cardiovascular disease prevention program focusing on weight management and nutrition education for adults age 18 and older serviced by the Fairfield Health Department, and further resolve that the first selectmen is authorized to make, execute, and approve on behalf of the town of Fairfield any and all contracts or amendments thereof with the State of Connecticut Department of Public Health. These costs are 100% reimbursable by a 7/111 to 6/30/12 State of Connecticut Preventive Health and Health Services block grant. And lastly, number 11, item 11, request from the Director of Health resolved that funds be transferred from an increase in grant revenue in the amount of $55,655 to cover the cost of Fairfield's continued planning and preparedness for, in response to bioterrorism, pandemic influenza, and other public health emergencies, and further resolve that the first selectmen is authorized to make, execute, and approve on behalf of the town of Fairfield any and all contracts or amendments thereof with the State of Connecticut Department of Public Health to conduct activities described in the personal service agreement log with regard to an August 10th, 2011 through August 9th, 2012 cooperative agreement award from the Centers for Disease Control through the State of Connecticut. These costs are 100% reimbursable. Would you like to make a motion?
Is Sands clear here?
His brother passed away, and somebody was here to--
There's three of us.
Okay, three people. See, it takes three people to cover Sands' work. Would you please stand? Would you like to make any comments about this before we make any motions?
Well, I could just comment on the third one that you read there, the amount of $55,655. That is from the State Health Department for Emergency Preparedness Activity Planning for the town. We've had the grant for the past 10 years, approved annually, and it's just been approved for another five years by the state, so it's ongoing.
Great. And this has been how many years that we've--
This would be the 10th.
10th year.
Now, is this an additional amount than we've normally got, or is this like the yearly amount?
Well, the amount has been in a range of, since it began, the very first year was only about $27,000. It's been as high as $90,000 plus. The current year, our grant amount is $64,000 plus, but then in the middle of this current year, we got a $98,000 amendment, which was targeted towards pandemic influenza and various activities.
So when you say it's an increase, is this just the $55,655, the normal, like, the normal grant, not the amount, but the grant itself?
It is the grant itself.
Okay. I'm not asking about the amount or whatever.
Okay, yes, it is the amount by which we want to increase our grant revenues, but then it is reimbursed by the state 100%.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. John, do you want to say anything about one of the other items?
Well, the--
Because I don't know which one you're here for, so--
The grant, the $5,000 for the Medical Reserve Corps, just for training and preparedness for the volunteers--
And if anybody wants--
--of the Medical Reserve Corps.
I'm sorry. If anybody wants to join the volunteers, should they call your office?
They can call our office, 256-3020.
256-3020, and are you looking just for medical personnel or other people as well?
No, medical or non-medical. We need both.
Medical or non-medical, so if anybody out there--
Or they can go on the website, and they can sign up there.
Okay, so you don't have to be a soil scientist or anything else for this, you just have to be willing to help.
Yep.
And we would love to have anybody who would like to do that. Thank you. Do you have any other questions?
Sure. Is this $5,000 the annual grant that we've been getting in this?
It's, this year, it's actually a little lower, I think, for the MRC. And it's eventually, it's, the capacity building, it's switched to NECHO providing the money. This $5,000 comes through them, but it has gone down from previous years. I believe the current year is-- Their current year is actually the same, $5,000 for the current year. Last year was more than that, I think it was $7,200, I believe.
Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Let me just point out, if anybody was, I'm going to come to you, I just want, if anybody was here for an appointment and, you know, was appointed to a position and would like to leave, you're welcome. You don't have to stay for the whole meeting, so just letting you know, you're allowed to leave. Okay, would you like--
I'm Sarah Levy.
I'm Sarah Levy. I'm the Public Health Educator, and I'm here for the Nutrition Education Weight Loss Program. This is a Preventative Health and Health Services Block Grant the Health Department has been receiving for many years. We've been using it for cardiovascular disease prevention since the late 80s, and this past year is the first year we used it specifically to target people with prediabetes who are at particularly high risk for cardiovascular disease prevention, and we're still actually just finishing up the program. It runs through June 22nd, in fact, I have the program tonight. And the evening program has been very successful. We started out with 21 people, had probably three people who trailed off, but the rest of the people are doing quite well. It's following an evidence-based program developed by the National Institute of Health, so it's a 16-session, 32-hour program, and it's designed to help people reduce their weight by 7%, body weight by 7% and engage in physical activity at a minimum of 30 minutes a day, five days a week, on an ongoing basis. And by doing that, they are able to reduce the risk of going on to develop type 2 diabetes by 58%. And if they're over 60, it's even a higher rate. So that's a significant amount, and that was originally done as a double-blind study comparing it to metformin, which is a diabetes drug. So unfortunately, with our sedentary lifestyles and energy-rich foods, our bodies just weren't designed to cope with that kind of lifestyle. The rate of diabetes is going up steadily in the population, so this is a program that helps reduce that risk.
And this isn't just for employees, this is for anyone in town who's interested?
Yeah, anyone who works or lives in Fairfield.
Okay.
And we'll be doing it again in spring of 2012, both an evening program and a day program.
And that'll be publicized how?
Yeah, on the website. They can call Public Health Nursing, 256-3150. There'll be press releases and newspapers, lawn signs, however we can get the word out.
Okay. All right, great. Well, thank you, all three of you, for coming and sharing with us. Do you have any other questions? I'm sorry.
No, I read. They gave an extensive amount of material, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve all three items, number 9, 10, and 11, as read.
Yeah, I second all three.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. See, number, item 12, Fiscal Officer, WPCA, to hear, consider, and approve a request from the fiscal officer for a transfer of funds in the amount of $39,084 from the contingency account and undesignated surplus of the Water Pollution Control Authority to cover the costs associated with the collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Fairfield and the United Public Services Employees Unit 222 for the contract term July 1, 2010 to June 30, 2011. Paul?
Thank you. As you're both aware, the RTM, the REPO meeting approved the contract with the Town Hall Employees Association, and these are the costs retroactive to that, for that contract, primarily the wage increases which were negotiated and approved by the RTM. I would ask this, the total amount, the $39,084 also includes a couple of WPCA, three WPCA employees. And I would ask that the motion be amended, that $2,075 be taken from the WPCA surplus account for their funding, and the $37,009, 37009, be taken from the contingency account for the funding for the town side.
Do I have a motion? Questions? I've been really, I was bad. I didn't ask for a public, oh, nobody's stopping me here. You gotta stop me on these things. I'd like to keep rolling, I'm sorry. Okay, first, can I pause for one minute? Does anybody have anything they want to say about the other items? And I know it's late, but, and I know that wasn't, no? Okay, thank you. Do you have some questions regarding the...
Sure. So the $2,075 that you want to come from us to approve from the WPCA surplus is for those two or three?
There's three, I believe, employees who are under the self-supporting front of the Water Pollution Control Authority.
Okay, so this worksheet that we have here is for both?
That was for combined.
To combine, okay.
This was originally, the sheet was before the RTM, which was for the total of all employees within the bargaining unit.
So what the cost of the contract was.
That's correct.
Okay, sure. I have no further questions.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Well, I think we have a motion to amend.
Actually, let me just say, what, a motion to amend?
Yeah, I would like to have you amended two of the figures that I mentioned of $37,009 from the contingency account and $2,075 from the surplus funds of the Water Pollution Control Authority.
Anybody in the public like to comment? And I just want to point out that it's customary for us to ask for that, but it's not required at the executive meeting, so there's nothing wrong that we didn't ask for before, but we generally do, so I just want to point that out. Any comments?
I'm going to make the motion. Did we make the motion yet, Jen? Because I'd like to make the motion to amend.
Okay.
So, do you have that amendment down, Jen?
Yes.
Okay, so it's an amount. Did you second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those, I get you.
All in favor? Aye.
Should we take public comment on the amendment?
Sure. Public comment on the amendment, anyone? Hearing none?
Back to the floor.
Back to the floor for the general amendment, the general item.
I'm in favor of, you know, there's really not much to talk about if the contract's approved.
Yeah, it's not, and what are you going to say about it?
Just really putting the money into the right...
Yes. The only question I have is, Paul, is where do we stand with our contingency on the town side? How much, how much is there and how much is going down?
Prior to this action, $493,400, 85 cents remaining.
And do we have any other contracts you're going to be coming back to us that you know of at this point to do similar things?
Unlikely. As you're aware, the RTM declined the contract to be professional and technical. The only other immediate thing that's, that would be coming, which would be retroactive in a sense, because we won't finally get to it until after, are those costs attributable to the referendum, which were estimated at $16,000, I think, something in that, under $20,000, so. And Dr. Tyldes indicated there was, as you may recall, $328,500 that was brought over, it's kind of a holding for the Board of Education because of excess costs. We have received the final grant on excess costs from the town this year, for the Board of Education. Dr. Tyldes indicated that there will not be need for those funds. So I think, you know, we're, we're going to wind up probably, if you take this money and the money coming, we're probably going to wind up with approximately $440,000 in that neighborhood left in the contingency account.
On the WPCA surplus, I know it's not a large amount, $2,000, I presume that they have more than...
It's in excess of $2 million.
More than that, that's easy. Okay. I have no further questions.
And that's a self-contained budget. I don't have any questions.
Make a motion to approve as amended.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All righty. Town Facilities Commission, to hear an update from the chairman regarding the following items. Mr. Kelly?
I'm here with...
Oh, did I miss? I'm, I'm sorry, I totally skipped bonding.
Only 35 million.
Yeah, it's only 35 million. That's probably why I didn't want to touch that one. To hear, consider, and adopt the bond resolution entitled Resolution Authorizing Appropriation of $35 Million to Refund Certain of the Town's Outstanding Bonds and Authorizing the Issuance of Refunding Bonds to Finance Such Appropriation, consisting of three pages, a copy of which is attached here too. Mr. Hiller?
We've been down this road several, fortunately, several times in the past several years. We have been contacted over the last couple of weeks by three different underwriters with opportunities to refund certain bonds. The fact of the matter is, we do not have the proper authorizations in place to do Interest rates are low. They have stayed low longer than I think anyone anticipated, and the immediate future is they're probably going to stay there probably through the end of this calendar year. We have to put something in place to give us the opportunity to do this. I would, I don't want to raise anyone's anticipation as to what it's going to be or how much it's going to be. Talking with our bond counsel and financial advisor, we frankly, somewhat arbitrarily, nothing has really reached the $35 million level, but we want to be ready. The fact of the matter is that before, if this board were to pass it and the Board of Finance and subcommittee of the RTM would pass it, there's also a rescission period as far as this concerned, which is into mid-July. We have tax limitations because of IRS regulations that we can't sell bonds 15 days either side of our sale date or our closing date on the note sale, which is anticipated on July 22. So really, the first week that we could do anything in this is about August 8. But given the fact that there's probably a chance that the RTM may take a holiday one of the months in the summer, I didn't want to be sitting here in the week of August 8 and say, you know, we could save a lot of money, but we don't have the resolutions in place. And, you know, I think, I think there's a fairly good chance we may be able to do something. And I think as each day goes along and rates stay down as low as they are now, the numbers can only get better. We can't do it right now because we don't have the resolution in place. We can do it 60 days from now, basically.
So basically, if the, if the money, if it looks like, or going out to bond is going to get us enough reduction to be worth it, then you'll go forward with it?
Yeah, it will be a decision of the bond committee, which both of you sit on.
Right.
The first, the three selectmen, Town Treasurer and myself, would make a decision. Basically, it gives the bond committee the authority to act at that time.
If we need to.
And as I say, given the calendar and given that we have a sale, we're really blocked out before doing anything before early August, if everything holds. If everything holds in this right now, we are going to have some opportunities. And frankly, if they hold, if rates hold where they are right now, the opportunities 60 days from now will probably be better than they are today. So there's not a rush, but there is some urgency to get, get the paperwork in place.
So it gives us the ability to refinance?
Get the ability to do it. Otherwise, you know, right, right now, we don't have that legal capacity.
Okay. I just want to clear something up. When you use the word refunding, do you really mean refinancing these bonds, correct?
Yeah, it's really, it's, yeah, it's, it's a refunding, you know, and these are called advanced refunding, and it depends on call dates, and it gets into a very, we're primarily looking at bonds that were issued in 2003 and 2005 right now. That's what they're looking at.
And we're talking to be able to get lower interest rates, so that saves us money.
Yeah, the best, the best we've seen right now is savings in excess of $400,000 net of all costs, and there are costs attributable to this transaction with our financial advisor and bond counsel and et cetera. But, you know, I think, you know, if, if rates hold, and that's the if, we are going to have some opportunities later this summer.
Now, when you do these refinances, and I know we have different models for when things expire and whatever, I mean, do you take a look at that to make sure?
Yeah, we try to, what you try to do is try to smooth out the payments schedule, and you, you can do that to a degree, you know, and, and the problem is, you know, where are you going to maximize your savings and where, you know, where do you, what you're really doing is you're taking these funds and buying other, you know, United States government securities, and you're securitizing your debt. It's not, it's a more complicated transaction than just refinancing one's mortgage, because there you're, you're ripping up an old document and putting a new document in place. Everything stays in place, it's just that we've gone and bought other instruments, government instruments, to create the interest to pay the debt. And as I say, we've got three reputable underwriters who have contacted us all within the last three weeks with, with opportunities.
My only other question is in the page, paragraph 1, and the, right before it says $35 million, should it say up to $35 million? I know it says in the second paragraph, it says, it says an amount not to exceed $35 million. I'm just wondering in paragraph 1 whether it should have similar language in there? Maybe I'm missing something.
This is documentation from my copy, we'll make the copies for the Board of Finance.
Shouldn't say appropriate an amount up to? Similar to that, the weight says that?
Is it an all or nothing? You do the, refinance it, or you wouldn't?
Because this seems to say it's 35 million.
Yeah, and, and rarely would we get exactly, we'd rarely get to 30, 35 million is more of a not to exceed. I mean, the last one I looked at, for example, when we did this in 2008, January of 2008, we had a resolution for 80 million.
Yeah.
We wound up doing 49 million.
So I get, my question is, I guess, should I just, can we, is it a problem to add the words in paragraph 1 right before it says 35 million, say, like it does in the second paragraph, an amount not to exceed 35 million?
I don't see any problem with that.
Okay. I have no more questions, although I'm planning on making an amendment, just to say that.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
Sure, I'm going to make a motion to amend the bond resolution. Paragraph 1, in the very first line of paragraph 1, immediately do four where it says $35 million to add the words an amount not to exceed, and then it will say $35 million.
Do you want to also alter the first paragraph, I mean, the paragraph that's on the call? Do you hear, it says up to 35 million, make it up to?
Yeah, we might as, and, yes.
Or not to exceed?
Yes. I'll also amend the call to also say an amount not to exceed $35 million.
Okay, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any public comment on that? Okay. Motion to approve the amended call item?
Ah, you want to hear, I guess it's back to the floor, I have no further discussion on it. I presume you don't?
No.
Okay, anything from the public on that, I guess?
That's, I was going to get to that, but I didn't know if you, did we have to make another motion since it's, nope, we don't?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right, then, any, any other public comment on that?
I make a motion to approve the amended motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, Mr. Kelly?
Thanks, Paul.
All right, let's see. Town Facilities Commission, to hear an update from the chairman regarding the following items. The summary of required information for a funding request?
I have to explain. I was going to bring the podium over so I could protect myself.
The guns point in that direction.
What's that?
The guns point at that direction.
You know what? Again, we know how that goes. So, Mr. Denny?
Sure.
Mr. Walsh?
Hey, guys.
I've got, for the summary of required information for the funding request, a couple of times I've heard a request, I, I did not, I am not the author of this document. What I would like is your permission to take the document with any comments you have to the Board of Finance, the RTM Subcommittee's, to discuss if this is the direction we want to take, having any of the funding requests that come before the town bodies from now on. I have another copy here, Mr. Walsh.
Thanks.
This is, okay, when we, we had spoken on the phone, and I think I told you that I had another document that had some extra items, and I didn't get that to you, I don't...
No, no, it's fine. What I was going to use this, I'm just, it's a stepping stone.
To stepping stone, to start.
It's a start to start with, because not everybody would say, well, we need this, we don't need that. But I think it's a good place to start.
Thank you, sir.
And I think that any comments you have, any additional information, I think we can vet it out, make a nice coherent bullet point list of items that would certainly help streamline the process so that, I think the process worked this time, it was difficult, but also the way the Facilities Commission was kind of injected into it very, kind of late in the game and everything. But I think that, I spoke to Dr. Tyldes about that, he's amenable to having the process start earlier, get the questions answered, and then we can come, then everyone can come before you, having, having embedded a long, at least the beginning with this, with maybe some additional points that go along with it. So I enter that as something for your discussion, review later, and I'm open to any suggestions once you have a chance to read and go through it.
I think once we come up with one document that is, has been vetted and approved, that that would be something that, for the purposes of the Board of Selectmen, when they're coming for a funding request, that we also both give them that same, the same points to address, because that may keep us from even having to send it to you, depending on how, you know, the questions were answered.
Well, I, I mean, like I said, what I'd like is permission from you, the Board of Selectmen, to go with it to the Board of Finance, offer it to them for their review, comment, edit, additional information, and to the RTM and the RTM Subcommittee's so that they can also take it and vet it and review it, and have everybody kind of on the same page, at least saying, yes, this is good, no, it's not, we like this, we don't like that. I, I, presumptive arrogance to think that this is the final document.
I think that sounds great.
Can I ask you about one of the points, I'm...
Yeah, sure. Sure, I read, I read it, but I don't...
In regards to, you can take a look at, number 5. Is number 5 what you really call a cost-benefit analysis?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted...
Jen's going to want to comment on that for the record, I'm sure I could say, well, I didn't bring one for Jen, but...
This is, this...
I saw, I saw somebody that actually had made their question.
This particular document is one that we used to use quite frequently, actually.
It's not something new.
No.
I'm not reinventing the wheel. I didn't...
But it's a good starting point for this, I think.
And that was what I wanted to bring to your attention.
Okay. The items, just to give you an idea, the items on here are background of the, describe the history and other background information, present enough detail so an individual with no prior knowledge would be able to grasp the situation readily, be concise but don't use buzzwords or technical jargon, the purpose and justification of the item, detailed description of the proposal, reliability of estimated cost, if the expenditure is conducive to increased efficiency and productivity, describe in detail the amounts to be saved in the payback period for the expenditure. Number 6, additional long-range costs, additional use or demand on existing facilities is number 7. 8 is alternates to the request. Safety and loss control, 9. Environmental considerations, 10. Insurance, 11. Financing, 12. Other considerations, 13, and other approvals. It definitely is a good place to start, and I would be in favor of you taking this to the other, sending this to the other boards. We can send it to the groups too, to review, and, and I have another document to go along with it that somebody had worked on with the Board of Finance.
I, I agree. I think it's a good time to start talking about this, we get a more uniform system so that we all know what we expect and every time we have one of these requests come.
One of the things that, I know, standing off the X, sorry. One of the things I really personally would like to avoid is what was happening at the town funding bodies. It's not fair to anybody to have that kind of, it should be, we should vet it out. And I think the only, the only issue was the timing on getting a lot of that, and everyone's running around trying to do a lot of stuff, and I think that that was really the, the primary thrust of that.
It'll be clear what information we need, and this isn't just for the Board of Ed, by the way, this would be for anybody coming.
Anybody. Oh, yeah, I think you could, you could use it, adopt it, and use it for all, all funding requests.
Okay. Great. I'll get this to Jen, and we can forward that down.
And Sherri, are you going to be adding on to that from some other document?
Yeah, I have another document that I don't have with me right now, but I have it upstairs.
I mean, I just...
If you have anything else, I'll, I'll send it to you, you can look at it and see. And I'm sure there'll be other people who've come up with items along the way.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Holland Hill Oil Tank, would you like us to give you what we know about it today, since we had a meeting on it?
Well, I, I did get.
Did you get the word?
Mr. Fryer was there, yes. And I just wanted to understand and recap kind of where that was going, and make sure what's gonna end up happening, I think, is that it'll, they're gonna bid it three different ways, and it's really, really, the only thing I wanted to say to it was, because we're a dual fuel, all the schools are dual fuel, and the idea behind dual fuel was to save money. It wasn't necessarily to have a safety net, but now that we've already invested, I couldn't even put a number on it, then putting an oil tank there to have it as a safety valve is not a bad idea. Whether it's, I personally don't care, whether it's in the school, outside the school, buried or not buried, the only issue is the amount of oil that hasn't been being burned, and really an operational issue, that if they're not burning the oil and it stays in the tank, for instance, in this case, if they put the underground thousand gallon tank in, that'd be five hundred gallons they'd have to have in the tank, roughly, to hold it in place because of buoyancy issue, water filling up the hole, and actually having it float up and move lines around. So that's, that's part of it, but then if they don't burn that five hundred gallons in a timely manner, they gotta, and then have to, but what I've, I've heard from Mr. Fryer, I'm not gonna speak for you, so if I'm saying anything out of line, please stop me, was that they have to take it out, treat it, filter it, then they can put it back. So there's costs involved with that process. I don't know what the costs are. All I know is there are costs associated with it, for the oil that hasn't been being used. So I just say, if, if we're gonna, you know, and natural gas only is not a bad idea either, if you're looking at the, at the global next ten years concept. We have a lot of oil tanks, some of them are ten thousand, with three thousand gallons of oil in them. So you start doing the math on all the different locations that have that type of quantity, and I think the issue at hand for the, for the Board of Selectmen, and this is what I understand it to be, is to really define the direction you want to start to take it. Do you want to stay with the dual fuel concept? And do we, or, and use it as, try to make it a savings thing, but I think everyone would agree that some, the political situations in the Middle East have changed a lot of dynamics of the oil business, or go straight to oil, or have a smaller backup tank. And I would suggest a smaller backup tank, we already have the built-in infrastructure, so it's really just having the tank there, just, kind of, just in case. And then having, if it's above ground, then they can burn it off, and, and it's not as big a, in, in, what would be the, it's not as large a use or expenditure of funds in the, in the term, say, they could burn it off in one, one or two weeks in the middle of the winter, and refill it on a regular basis, so maybe at the beginning of the season, somewhere in, in March, April, they burn it off, use the oil tank, and then they, they have it put back in the tank, at three hundred and thirty gallons or two hundred and seventy-five gallons. Whether it's in the building or not, I, it's really, it's really the Board of Ed who runs the building, whether if it can go down there, what would need to happen, and it's really how you wanna, where you want to go, where you see it going as, as you move forward. And that's all I wanted to say.
Okay. Do you mind if I?
Go right ahead.
And First Selectmen Stanek and I had the opportunity to have a meeting there today to see it and to ask questions. We had, Mr. Fryer was there, we had somebody from a tank removal company, whose name I can't recall right now.
Skip Cost.
And we had a fire marshal out there. Kessler?
Kessler.
Kessler. And we got a chance to ask a lot of questions, and I understand, and you make some good points about the town investing a lot of money to have the dual fuel capability, but unfortunately, sometimes those decisions are made at that point in time, when the prices were, at least at that point, closer in, in time together, where it would make sense, and there is a switch you actually see, oil or gas. And on a daily basis, the Board of Ed could make a decision, use gas today, use oil tomorrow. But unfortunately, the swings in prices, and from experts that we've all been hearing about, and just reading the New York Times, seems to suggest that gas for the foreseeable future. I think Moderator Steele's company who does this says that a minimum of fifteen years out, that the price differentials are gonna be so drastic, that it doesn't appear that we're gonna be using oil for any time in the, in the foreseeable future. And it doesn't really make sense, I don't think, for the town to be throwing good money after bad, and carrying two thousand gallon loads in each of these schools, and being forced to expend it at a higher price, just to keep buoyancy in a tank. And the other thing I don't want to do is buy new tanks, a thousand gallon oil tank, bury it, and not really use it, and have to replace it twenty, twenty-five years from now, when it really didn't get used, other than to burn oil just to keep the buoyancy issue going. So I think from my standpoint, in the foreseeable future, and I'm saying fifteen to twenty years, it would make more sense to save the money on the tank, put a tank inside these schools, if possible, and from what I saw in the conversations we had, it looked like we could certainly do it at Holland Hill, so we can monitor that tank, and it would be inside, and less condensation, because it's at a room temperature, and all this other stuff, than to be expending money burying a tank someplace else, and, and having to continually refill it. What we were talking about, it seemed to be a three hundred and thirty gallon tank seemed to be the most appropriate, based on, you know, at Holland Hill, they have two boilers, and the rate, it has to rate right on there what they use if they're going all day, so we get, if there was an emergency on the gas side, such as, I think, Mr. Morabito and Mr. Fryer bought up, like, what happens if a gas line is cut, we could have a delivery made once a day for that emergency.
Right.
And we always have the, the, the oil capability. The other great thing about it is, to get fresh oil, maybe one day in a year, we turn on the oil just to burn that oil off, and we have fresh oil the next day, and that lasts for the next year. So I, I think that's the, you know, we had, we didn't want to have a Board of Selectmen meeting there, so we didn't really talk about it, but from our, from my analysis of what was going on there today, at least for Holland Hill, that seemed to be the way to go, and I think in the other schools, you know, maybe we should give you guys a little bit more, I don't know if that's enough direction, but, and specifically for Holland Hill, that seemed to be the direction to go, and I think that that's the direction we should go, is temporary tanks, until the market conditions change so much that something else is necessary. So, I don't know, do you have any?
Right, and then, well, the major cost, if we did put it back in the ground, there are several considerations, one would be leaking, and we wouldn't have to worry about that if we put it inside, there's less condensation, there's less oil that you have to hold if it's a smaller tank, even if you're not filling it all the way, and so you'd have less problem in burning it, that you don't have to continuously monitor the ground to make sure that it's not leaking, they have to do that now when it's in the ground. The big cost is removing it from the ground and putting the fill back in, so if we take out the old one and we put it back in, when we're not using it for, like you said, the next ten to fifteen years or twenty years, maybe ever, then we're still gonna have to take it out in thirty years regardless. So all the, everything points to putting it inside, if it's at all possible, the temperature, it's warmer in there, a lot of things. And then, if we don't put it inside, they do have concrete coated tanks, basically, and it's a big block. So I know, one of the concerns, somebody mentioned was, oh, well, what if kids climb on it? Well, it wouldn't be any more dangerous or different than if they climbed on some of the big dumpsters that are out there, because, except it wouldn't open, it's completely sealed in, and they were gonna get some estimates for those, so that we'd get a sense of how much that costs, but those could be put outside on the ground, they wouldn't have to have the monitoring, it would be similar to having the interior tank. So I would agree, the three thirty tank, I think they mentioned two seventy-five or three thirty, and we thought slightly larger was better, because it would go a little bit longer than a day, maybe two, day and a half, two days, if it was the coldest weather.
I just like, I wanted to kind of bring it around, that it's an operational decision that would need to be made by you guys.
Sure. And have you been in that Holland Hill facility?
I went in briefly, just to take a quick look, and it looked like, yes, you could probably, there was room to put one, but.
Yeah, there's some equipment there where they pump, there's, there's some pumps that, that, I guess they used to use number four fuel oil, that was thick, and they had four, very thick pipes, and whatever, well, that, that's left over from those days, we use number two oil now, which is thinner.
Yes.
And the thought was, and we talked to the fire marshal about removing that equipment, which is no, really no longer necessary, because the lines that go to the furnaces end right there, that area where the pumping stuff in there would clear out some room, and we'd just have to be three feet off of the wall, which he thought would be no problem, but they're gonna be putting together some schematics and estimates, I guess, to get that done.
Terrific, that's, it's, like I said, it's an operational thing, and it's out of our purview to be trying to go on that.
I guess, are you, are you guys still looking, are we asking them, though, at TFC, to look for the rest of the buildings?
Well, there are ten buildings that have to be reviewed, and I think, I think what we were just saying is that the interior tank would be the optimum for all of the schools, I think, and just, and Mill Hill already has that, apparently. So the other schools that are left, I think there's seventeen schools, great, so the other fifteen, whatever.
Ten might be done more immediately, I guess?
I think, yeah, the tanks are all the same age or something. So anyway, yeah, we would probably have to look into that, and you might want to propose a schedule at the Board of Ed to tell us how you, we would like to address those. Would you, please?
Just to point a clarification on Jim's comments, that piping that we looked at today?
Yes.
It's not for the old oil.
Okay.
What that is, it's basically a day tank for the oil, keep it warm and circulating, so it's always on hand for those purpose when they, when they come on. So it is for number two, it can't be abandoned, we can, we can tie the, a new tank into that system, so it's not.
But I guess the question is, do you need that if the oil doesn't need to be heated? Because if you, the tank is, if the tank is inside, it's gonna be room temperature.
Maybe not, and it circulates back to the tank, at a certain point, circulates, fills up, overfills, goes back to the tank, so we could, I don't, I'm not sure we have to live with it, that's the point, and, you know, it will be the way I.
You had, you had two potential sites for a tank in there anyway, so.
I think we can.
And if not, we have the third, the option of the concrete coated thing.
I do have a question, if I could ask it.
Sure.
Is the decision right here now, that we're going to use a three thirty, and try to fit that in all our schools?
The RTM put it to the Board of Selectmen, didn't they?
On this tank only.
On this tank, on this tank only.
The reason I'm asking that is the RTM has asked that we get pricing on all of the different alternatives and options, underground, five thousand, one thousand, five, you know, one thousand, above ground, outside, inside, so I just wonder if we can, you know, just kind of put that to plan, and say, well, we'll research the three thirty and get done with it.
Well, my, I think my preference would be to do three thirty at all schools, however, if there was a space limitation where we could fit a two seventy-five instead of a three thirty, and that became the sole reason for, you know, for making it a little smaller, then I, I could be talking to a two seventy-five, under a specific schematic, or a specific boiler.
Just trying to say, it was all a lot of work.
Yeah, I think, though, I think the goal was to do a day tank, in general, is to do a day tank, hopefully three thirty, to try to maximize that day tank, but if it had to be two seventy-five, based on these specifications, we could live with that.
Any other public comment?
Yeah, so, I think we are looking for more clarification, because I mentioned at the RTM meeting, we have thirteen other tanks that we have this issue with, so if it can get resolved right now, we know what that is for in the foreseeable future, I don't.
Well, I, I don't know what your thoughts are, but my thought would be to go forward with this plan.
I, I completely agree with everything, the three thirty would be the primary, if they could put it inside, ideal, if the two seventy, if they can't fit a three thirty, but they could fit a two seventy-five inside, then I would go to the two seventy-five, and third choice, I would go to something outside above ground, if, but, you know, we'd have to look at those. I think really, then you have need to come back to us and tell us how, if there are any that can't fit them on the inside, and then maybe we should address those separately, because we don't really know what the, the details are of that.
That was our plan, but I just wanted to.
So you want us to go, just so we're clear, you want us to go to each school and let you know about the three hundred or two seventy-five, whether or not it can fit inside, rather than going through the whole five thousand, one thousand?
I, I think so.
That's, that's what I would prefer.
Okay, so if we go back and work that way, then you could, that will satisfy.
I think that will satisfy.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
The only other question I'd like to raise, with all the things that are coming up next, with these other tanks, is there thirteen of them? Thirteen of them?
Ten.
There's actually, there's actually ten.
Okay.
We originally said thirteen, but we'd forgotten about the two at Fairfield Woods, which are coming out, and those, I think, and Strattfield was the third one. So we started with thirteen, but it's really ten that are gonna come due, the elements are now new.
Well, Fairfield Woods be going, in, what are you doing?
Yeah, they're, that's in the plan, and that's.
Where's, where are they going?
In brown.
And, you've already, you've already started that?
Coming in next week there.
Okay.
Strattfield, of course, is right there.
I guess the question should be, is whether the board, with working with the town facilities, should think about whether we want to do a program where all ten of them are replaced at the same time, to try to save money, to see whether there's economies of scale, not only on the removals, but also on the purchasing of the tanks and the installs, where maybe we could put an RFP together, and we can get better bids on all of them. Holland Hill might have to stand alone, because we've approved funds for that.
Without getting into a dialogue, Dave, are they all due in one year, or one year, two year, three year?
Technically, they'll, they'll be, the following ten are all about the same age, so they're going to come up pretty quickly.
So we may be staggered, two or three in this year, four the next year, three following year.
Yeah, the state would accept an extended program, but I think what they're saying is, they're all gonna be the same age.
Right, right.
Do we do them all at once, absolutely?
Or if you stagger it over, at the break in the year, you could be five from one year and five in the other, and it's roughly the same time.
I believe it's actually in the long-term plan, is a three-year plan.
Okay.
So that it's not too big of a jump. Mr. Fryer made representation that they were all bought at the same time.
Roughly, approximately.
I think we broke it out in the Long Beach plan to take it over three years, if it's your preference for us to do it all at once, and come back, would there's likely a different way to do it to know that.
That might be a budgetary issue.
I would say.
Would be discussed with the board.
Well, I guess, I guess the question is, is maybe someone should see whether, what kind of cost savings we can get by doing all ten.
No, let me talk to Purchasing tomorrow, and just see what advice she would give me, because she tends to know these things better than any of us, and I'll get back to you tomorrow, Mr. Fryer, or who, who would, or Dr. Tytle, okay.
Yeah, if you could let the superintendent's office know, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? Okay. Thompson Facade Post?
I just wanted to put it on here, just because it was, I'm not, I'm not sure what it was punted for, it wasn't clear to me what was needed, except possibly the one quote for actual, what it would cost to remediate the lead, and then I think it can go right back up to the RTM at the end of the month. But I just, I think that was, I put it on here, because I think that's all that needs to happen, and from our point of view, on the Town Facilities Commission, otherwise, and we know it's something that should be done, and we know that it wasn't done in the prior building project, just due to their, their financial constraints at that time. So that was, that was the reason that was on there.
Okay. Board of Ed Warranty Extension Project update?
Right. Well, we, we've met a couple of times, Mr. Fryer was there, Mr. Collin, Dr. Tytle, Mr. Carey, Mr. Morabito was there, and we, we went through it. I, I think, in fairness to the title of the program, I think what I wanted to do is try to explain what our take was on, and I did make sure at the meeting with Mr. Carey, Dr. Tytle, and Mr. Morabito, and, and the aforementioned names, that it's, it's really not, it is gonna extend the warranty, but really what the, the goal here is, and it may also be something applicable in, in its scheme to how the tanks are handled, was to, all they, they did back in, twenty years ago, economy of scale, they went out, they bid X amount of roofs, ten or twelve of them at the same time, they brought in one contractor, they did all the roofs on the different schools, almost within the first couple of years, within a two or three year period, and what, what, what I think is happening, if I may, I'm using my hands, and the paper's melting in it, my understanding of this is, and, and I'm, look to Sal, if I'm at all not accurate, is that what they're trying to do is stagger these, stagger some of these, so that we don't have failures on the school, on the school roofs simultaneously in different roofs, or suddenly it's a panic, rush in, change, fix the roofs. They're, they're saying these actually were the five better roofs, and that if we, X amount, it was nine hundred thousand dollars, we, we, they had, I guess, they had Tech We, we, they had, I guess, they had Tech to America evaluated based on a Hoffmann architect's report and criteria, and which their Hoffmann is one of, is, is in my opinion, at the town facilities, one of the best in the nation for this type of application. These are the costs that they came up and they broke it down, and everybody's seeing those costs. We, that went round and round at our table, and basically, Mr. Supone and Mr. Bricks were on the same page from my observation. It's just how it was implemented. Mr. Bricks was more in line with having Hoffmann come out, actually look at it, do the thermal imaging, look what had to be done, and maybe the costs weren't an estimate like this and it could be better defined. In order to have that happen, though, we have to ask for money. And then Mr. Mr. Supone also was saying, but the needs to be done, needs to be done. And the bottom line was, the warranty extension program, I think the word warranty in there, it's a misnomer. It's really to extend the life of these roofs, spread it out over a period of time of, I think they were saying, if we get five years out of it, maybe some of them will be 10 after the warranty ends. Then with that extension of the warranty, with, with the extension of the life of these roofs, then it will stagger the costs somewhat over a period of time that the roofs, that the ones that absolutely have to be done will start to come up within the budget. And it was, seemed very logical because, you know, with all the fiscal constraints that we're all under personally and within the town, that seemed to make sense that you want to spread out your maintenance over a period of time. So really, they do all this work and they can have a warranty company come in and they'll, for really the smallest part of it, is getting the warranty. It's the work to bring it up to speed, to give it so that it'll have longevity of life and extend the use of life of the existing roofs that are there. So the all in all, the sense at the town facilities commission was, this is a good idea. We'll have a little bit more discussion about it tonight. I can come back formally. I just wanted to update you on where we stood. And I think it might be prudent that we change the name of the warranty extension program to extending the use of life of these roofs, and then, and we could get a warranty, only because I think that better explains what's happening here. And I'm not very articulate at these things, but I think that that helps to explain better what I got out of it and understanding where, where we need to go.
It's just basically interim maintenance.
It's a maintenance, but it's a lot of maintenance. It's a lot of stuff. It's pitch boxes, flashings, sections of roof that are leaking badly, thermal imaging, having an architect come on, come onboard, you know, that they would have, they're actually have the architect to develop what they needed to do. Correct?
Yeah.
Yes. Have an architect actually develop what needs to happen in these rooms and the criteria that needs to be met. And if the warranty is just a small incremental amount more to get them to buy, some company to buy into it, it's GAF, correct?
Johns Mansville.
What's it, at Johns Mansville? Thanks, Johns Mansville would then say, yes, we'll warranty your roof now for five more years. And it, it seems to us, I mean, now that, if you really look and dig into it, I think that's why Mr. Carey was behind it completely, Dr. Title, the board of ed was behind it. And I think that it, I think a little bit more talk tonight, and we'll wrap it up, and we can give you a formal outlook on this, and, and actually, I think we'll be supporting it.
Can I ask, when you had that discussion, and I talked to Mr. Morbido about this today on the telephone, to specifically talk about Sherman's, one of those schools, and with the project that is about to commence there over the next year. And with the possibility, I think we're going to be hearing some more about it momentarily, about the HVAC system, and not be going until next year, about whether that school specifically, I'd like you guys to talk about that school specifically. It makes sense to have that as part of the program. And if Mr. Morbido says that what we'd have to do is make some modifications, and they have to come back and certify our people's work that, who did the HVAC work, and they'd have to be certified and all sorts of stuff. But I want to make sure that that's the case because I'm a little concerned, especially if the HVAC work does not get done till next summer.
Right.
I do not want to void a warranty that we just paid a lot of money for when we cut, he said approximately 10 holes in the roof, and we're putting mechanicals up there. And, you know, so if you guys can just talk about those issues and just report back what you think.
We talked about it at our last meeting.
Okay.
I brought that up at our last meeting. The sense was, if you, we went forward with the warranty replacement program, Saul Bricks, who's, this is like his bag, he does roofs all the time for RBIBM, said, that would be great because that warranty contractor's going to be out there watching these roofs like a hawk to make sure they're done properly. Also, working with Mr. Special, I had brought up the point about when we start first thinking about this, is because they, they require a half-inch roof pitch, that we asked the architects to look into what would have to happen with the mechanical curves and the height. Because if you add a half-inch per foot, I didn't do the math myself, but it could add as much as six, eight inches of insulation, and we have to make sure that the equipment is high enough off so that we don't impede that in the future. So the architects are looking at that, and they'll, it may, it's not, it's not a huge dollar amount just to make it, instead of a 12-inch curve, say an 18-inch curve, which will accommodate a half-inch pitch. It'll, it may look a little awkward in the beginning, but, but once the roof, new roof is put on, ultimately down the road five years from now, it would be an easier install. It wouldn't have to be moving or lifting up equipment and have that cost to implement as well. But we did talk about that, and we'll talk about it again tonight.
Okay, great, thank you.
Building projects update?
Okay. Well, fair enough, we have an architect onboard, well, Stradfield. The, the reason I, I wanted to briefly say Stradfield is because what, what's happening over at Stradfield is, again, learning about the window project or at the town facilities commission level and, and learning some of the things that are going to be happening with that. I asked the contractors over at Stradfield to take a look at the caulking and the envelope over there. Now Hoffmann reports were issued, and I know our architects were looking at the Hoffmann report saying it's, it's general maintenance. But then hearing some of the concerns from the board of ed, SAV, that I said, you know what, we're there. Let's see where we have money in an allowance or something, and let's take care of the envelope. Let's make sure when we leave the building, we're watertight. We're going to be expending over $250,000 of the funding that we have, that we're not taking away from any of the program, but we're going to make sure that, I had heard that a couple of the rooms were leaking, and they're thinking it's the caulk around the windows was tired and needed to be replaced. So we're going to be doing the caulking. We're already initiated the repointing on the, one of the facades, in the worst case, we're going to be pointing all walls. Some of these we had in allowances, we already knew some of it was in there. But I wanted to bring it to speed that on Stradfield, this is going to occur, and the copings and flashings around the roof and everything also. So I just wanted to keep you up to speed that, as our budget continues to dwindle, that some of these, this is some of our expenditures, and I think they're worthwhile, and the committee agreed and they supported it. So that, that's happening at Stradfield. Otherwise, they're on time, we're under budget. I'm hoping not to have to come back. I promised that I wouldn't, and I, I think that that's a very important thing. But it's, it's going to be, we're going to go down the wire on Stradfield to see where we are in the middle of the summer. I know we have, there's been some furniture requests and things, and it's all about money. I mean, it's all about, are we going to actually have the money for Stradfield to, to do that? We have to be careful. We're going into another summer worth of renovations on expected conditions that could occur. I mean, and I just wanted to keep you, it's really an update on Stradfield. The Fairfield Level High School Window Project, we have an architect onboard. We've, I think we've, as ambitious as we've been trying to get an architect onboard, we're, we're realizing that they're going to do their work this summer, prepare some documents, and then we're going to go to bid and the pro, for the project. And that, and we'll go back, we're going to have to go back. Once we know the numbers, we'll go back for the funding on that, the request on to move forward with the larger scale project with the windows and the life extension program. The, the roof, we have a Hoffmann architect onboard for the ward roof. The ward roof is, they did some sampling, I forget, 13 or 14 samples on the whole roof, or it was more than that, I think. But quite a few samples were taken on cores to see the condition of the mastic, and they're working those into the documents. Again, with the hopes that we'll be able to know what the phasing is when I come back for the funding for the ward roof project. Mr. Gallagher is here, but Penfield is, if you haven't been down to the beach, is moving right along. It's on time, it's under budget. I think it's going to be great for the town. It's going to give it a nice, long, a new, like breathe new life into that, that area of the beach, and I think that the whole town is going to be very happy with that. Oh, and Fairfield Woods Middle School, Mr. Supone is the chairman of that, and I always ask him, we're on time and under budget, right?
On time and under budget.
We're on time and under budget. They're really kind of just getting, getting going, and they're going to have a very full summer over there with that project. Anything to add, though?
Nothing really, I mean, it's going pretty smoothly so far.
Okay. I don't think I've missed anything except Sherman.
Do you want to lead off for Sherman, or will he get to number 15?
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
This 1,000 gallon tank that we're taking delivery on for the Fairfield Woods Middle School, is that what we used?
A thousand or?
Ten.
10,000, I thought he said.
So any way to turn that ship around?
Well, I'm going to go back and find out if we can do anything with it. The problem is, it's already on its way here. I mean, it's supposed to be delivered next week, but if I could not screw up our schedule, I may hold up on actually planting it until we can figure out if we might want to use it somewhere else and maybe swap tanks in light of the conversation today. I'll, I'll see what I can do.
And or, or if the guy can make a U-turn, we'll pay for the shipping so far, or something like that. But if we're going in a different direction, to the extent that something can be done, it might be nice to make that part of the project.
No, I'm going to go back and check on it and see if we can, if we can change that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Gallagher, thank you for the work on Penfield because it looks phenomenal.
Yeah, I wanted to say thank you to the TFC for all the work they've done at all these projects and the small projects. There's too many initials in that.
Special Project Standing Building.
Standing Building Committee, okay. Thank you to all of those members also, and all the building committee, the school building committee committees, and Penfield Building Committee, because you've all done great jobs. And I'm so happy to hear they're under budget, if not all, most of them sounded like they were.
Well, we, today we are.
Good, okay. Well, today's good. It's a good day today.
Today is a good day, yes, it is indeed.
Al, thank you, and I also want to thank you and, and TFC. I mean, clearly you have a ton of work on your plate, and the fact that you guys are all doing this on volunteer basis is just phenomenal because there's just a lot of balls in the air right now.
Well, we're, I always say it, we're happy that you're using our, the resources. It, it makes it for interesting meetings, and it's right, it's right up everybody's alley. They're, they're, they're.
And thank you to all your families for letting you come out and do all this work for us.
My wife doesn't know I'm here.
She does now, yeah.
Well, it's all right, no, I don't lie, she doesn't watch the TV program too much, so I'm happy there. Sherman, if you haven't all, if you haven't heard, or you have heard, what, what has happened is, we have retracted the bid in order, Ms. Holland suggested that it would give the architects time to implement some additional stuff. But that wasn't the reason we retracted the bid. The, the reason that we tracked the bid is because the, we're not going to get a permit till towards the end of July. So it afforded us a time, it's been, I have to tell you that the board of ed people, Ms. Roxby, everybody has been under a lot of pressure to keep going, get this done, get it done. I think the most, the thing is, we were very all optimistic that we're going to do this, and then a few weeks ago, it started, with the mechanicals is when it started, really, when about that we may not be able to do the mechanicals. Because what has happened in the industry with regards to the mechanical equipment is, instead of them many years ago, it was they'd have it on the shelf, ready to ship so they could get the order. Now, because of the recession, people, they don't want to get stuck with equipment ready to go on the shelf, so they have to build it. So that means it went from a six to eight-week lead time to a 12 to 14-week lead time. Yes, all right. So that in itself, now it says, okay, so just going to stick with the mechanicals for a minute so, so I can better explain that. With that extra jump in time, if we pick the outside number and discussing of cutting holes in the roof over there, and visions of McKinley's mechanical equipment not being put in, tarps over it, water pouring in, it was, you know, that, in my mind, I was around for that. So with having said that, then we'd be waiting for mechanical equipment. Okay, so that's not a good course of action when they're going to be, we may not get them all, we would get some. So that would have to be placed. We needed a contractor onboard in order to order the equipment. So that would mean we'd have to have gone to bid on or around March to get the contractor onboard. So we would bid through April, end it, we award, we are awarding in May, not to put the documents, we're ready, because the architects weren't released to do the documents until March 15th, after the, after we went through the funding request. And I, I don't know the specific dates, and if I'm wrong, I can, I'm certainly going to be corrected. So once the architects were able to go from, they were, they were working at risk, but the, the climate here in town has been, you know, not everything's going through. So once they got the money, once they were released, they started doing that. So that, that's part of this puzzle, that maybe if we had had the project handed off to us a couple of months earlier, as opposed to, I think, getting it in October and then doing an RFP, RFQ, getting the architect, getting the schematic, and then starting the funding process in January, we should have been back in last year doing the funding process, doing this. Now, I don't know enough set about when we got the job at the special project standing building. Mr. Special's really the chairman of, I'll just going to, as part of this kind of synapsis. So, so we had that pressure, and we're all trying to be optimistic. We want to make sure we get as much done for the community as we can. We all want this to happen, we all want this to work for everybody. So with that timeline, you, if you just start backing it up, the mechanical equipment wasn't going to happen this summer. Because there was no way that I would support cutting holes in the roof and waiting for mechanical equipment to come into classrooms. It would be, it just would be a disaster. I think it could, it could turn into a disaster. I mean, we could roll the dice. But with the, with the climates that's going on and the, and what's happened with the weather, you know, it would be the rainiest summer we've had in years, it would, it would just be drought. So I was very concerned about doing something like that, which would mean if we released, if we released the contract to go, we were getting the bids in, would have been towards mid-May, we would award, there's not enough time to make it happen. There's not enough time to get the mechanical equipment in. So with respects to that, I, I, I did mention it at one of the earlier building committees that I was concerned about it, but the architects kept depositing and said, look, we're on this track, let's see what can happen, and let's see what the bidders have to say. If they start saying, telling us stuff and what's happening here and there, and, you know, we'll, we'll take that when we hear from them. So, so that was the mechanical equipment. With regards to the planning and zoning, there was a little confusion with regards to some of the documentation earlier on, what we needed, what we didn't need. We brought John Fallon in well in time to have this whole process get going. But then the person we were using, for whatever reason, Mr. Special was running around to get chicken with his head off, getting drawings, running over to the architects, is this what you need? The email would come a day or so later, no, actually, we need blah, 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 we need this put on, that put on it. And to, not to any detriment to the Wiles architect, the issue just simply was, we got the A2 survey sometime around the day before, two days before bid. So it's probably my phone. What's that?
It's your wife.
It's okay, I'll take care of it. You know, if you think, I'm not afraid of any of you. You need to know that. I mean, I, it's, it's okay, though, it's okay. So, so then, having said that, so, so the A2 survey became a big issue, and Fallon could not really put the documents to TP and Z without that. However, he also needed to have substantial amount of documentation to go to the funding bot, to the permitting, for the permitting, the board of the building permits, for everything. You have to have a certain level of documents. And with the A2 survey dragging, we, we could have put them in earlier, there would have been a lot of comments that come through. Not, and having said that, so it really, I mean, you could, we could certainly throw the A2 survey guy under the mop, you could throw some other people under the bus, you could do that. It, it just, we were.
Everything had, given when you started, everything had to go like clockwork with nothing going wrong for it to really get to the point where it would all be done together at the timeframe that we had.
Well, that's, that's a big part of it. And, and when I heard about the mechanicals, I, I started going, oh, what else could go wrong?
Right.
Well, wait, and it started to. I think, I think we all want it to be done. I know that everybody, I can speak for myself on the committee, the other committee members who are here, we all want it to be done on time. We all want this project to go forward for the community. They waited a long time for this. It is not, it's not that it was planned out this way. I don't think you can point at any one person. I think you could spread it out a little bit, but it was not intentional, it was little increments. And with the tight timeframe that we had, I think that it has to be said that we couldn't afford too many of these little incremental changes to the schedule. And I think that that's where we are. I did read the patch, and I don't think that was accurate in there, that we're not doing anything this summer. But, because that was not said. I think that things can start this summer, and I know that we're going to move into the special project now. That was what I wanted to say as apart from the.
TFC side.
The TFC side of it, and now.
And nobody, it wasn't that you didn't know you had to go to TP and Z. Everybody always knew you had to go to TP and Z, it's just that you didn't have some of the documents you needed to get on the agenda earlier.
John Fallon, quite frankly, we go to John on every project I've ever done in the school, and I'd spend from McKinley, Burr, the portables, everything, go to John, John takes it, shepherds it through. And he was on with plenty of time to bring that to fruition.
Just the documents.
And it's just that we were really struggling getting documentation from particularly the A2 survey. That really, really slowed it down a little bit.
Okay. Does anyone, do you have any questions first, Jim?
The only question I guess I have in that regard, and Al, you and I have a chance to speak today, so you, you were able to answer a bunch of my questions. But, I mean, it just seems to me at the beginning of the process, we should come up with a, a timeline that everybody should get familiar with. Because to the extent that we needed to get moving earlier, I mean, I guess you probably should have known that. Like, you know, the, you know, I'm not saying you should have known that, or your committee should have known that, but as a group, somebody should have known that it was going to be longer. Because the problem that it's caused now is, and I'm not saying that any, I'm not sure where, where it is, is that we have a community that was kind of promised a, a project to be ready on September 1st, or whenever the first day of school is. And we were trying to get that work done while children weren't in school, and now we're in this unfortunate circumstance of making decisions on how we're going to move forward with that from here on out. Whether we're going to build while they're there, whether we're going to hold off until next summer, whatever, which I guess we'll talk about. But it just seems to me as though once, and, and some of this was sold to us, sold to this commit, to this board, sold to the RTM and the board of finance, you've got to approve it tonight so that we can get it done this summer. And, and there's people on the RTM who are saying to me, you know what, we felt like we had to make the decision that night because it was definitely going to be done this summer, and now it's, 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 it's not. And, you know, maybe we got to take a broader look at some of these timeframes and realize that if we don't have something ready to go and funding and approval by October.
Right.
We're not going to get it done by next summer.
Right.
You know what I mean? It's just not going to happen. You know, because I realize the tight timeframe, and especially. You know, because I realize the tight timeframe, especially if there's vendors that change their things, and they're not keeping stuff on the shelf, and now you have to order it, and it's, that's a big time change, you lose a couple of months right there.
And for myself, I would never have stood up there.
Yeah, I know.
And I, because I tried not to mislead or do any of that, because it just, that's not a good thing.
Yep. But now hearing, I guess, where we are, I guess we got to figure out where we're going. So, I don't know whether we're going to talk about that now?
Yeah, basically, we're going to go lead that into the Special Project Standing Building Committee, and hear an update on that, and I do want to say that I did reach out to Eileen Roxby, the principal, and asked her what the school thought, what they wanted to do in terms of this, because there were several options, and one was going on and doing nothing until next year, and one was to go forward and do partial now, and partial when it was more appropriate, you know, the timing was appropriate with the weather conditions and whatnot. And they came up with suggestions, and maybe we could start with her, just to see what, is she here?
Eileen, thank you.
I'm sorry, I couldn't see you in the back.
You're good, thanks. Thank you for reaching out and to get my input, but, yes, Annika Taya Leonard, Sound Org, you know, and I met, and we really kind of looked at some different scenarios on some of the things that we need, and being that we were in a space crunch, we had-
You might stand up here, just so that-
Sort of like on the X.
It's right there. There's a lot of extra heat on that spot.
There you go. And being that we were, you know, we are in a space crunch, as is why we're at the table to begin with. So, we kind of looked at some of the possibilities of, as you said, keeping it off till next year, which would not help us with our situation with our space, and then looking at perhaps just doing maybe the kitchen or something this year, but really, when we looked at it, we thought that the best thing would be to try to get the additional teaching space and administration area done as soon as possible so that we can utilize this space, and then, if we can, at the same time, because of construction ease, to start the kitchen on the outside, and then perhaps finish it over a break period, like maybe Christmas break or something like that. And then keeping the H back, which would disrupt the whole school over the summer of next year. So we did kind of look at that. With that, of course, we're looking at instructional spaces, we're looking at safety and security issues with the children in the building at the same time, and then can we deliver the curriculum that we promised our children? So we really put our heads together to try to put together a plan where we can displace the office into perhaps the library, or in an adjacent classroom, utilize all the people that are in the office into those areas, the nurse, instructional improvement teacher, gifted school psychologist, language arts consultant, the secretarial staff, and myself. And then, that would give us space, but of course now, it's Sherman, so we're at a space crunch, so with that, we're looking at displacing other people, perhaps putting music on a cart or utilizing the portable that we currently have as our, not as a teaching space, but we could utilize that as a teaching space. So there's lots of if and scenarios in place, but the biggest thing for us is to look at the curriculum as well, and can we deliver it? We have our computer lab in there, and we know that we will not be able to have total access to that, so are there other scenarios we can utilize? We can utilize our netbooks, we can deliver the curriculum in the classroom, we could put a traveling library on a cart, so, as we would do with other specials as well. So we've kind of thought it through, and think that it could work for us, given, you know, that we would certainly have to have meetings on safety concerns, and what to do about ear quality during that, and how we're going to, you know, make sure that we keep everyone's health and safety in mind. And then, of course, does the community support that? And so that would be another big thing, that we would talk to our constituents, the teachers, the parents, the children, and make sure that everyone's on board with this. So, in talking with parents, they want this done, you know, we want, they want to get this done as soon as possible. Waiting another year is really unacceptable, and so, given the disappointment in everything that has happened, that, you know, I'm sure that once we talk to the community and have a plan, clear plan in place with all of those things that we just talked about with the safety, security, and instructional space and curriculum, then I think, you know, I'm assuming that everyone can accept the plan and go forward, and that's something that I think that, I have a PTA meeting next Wednesday, so certainly that would be on the agenda, and in the meantime, I could talk to staff and students, and we can get their concerns and address them.
Okay, so you'll be able to do that before they even have the TPZ meeting, so for some reason you had a total change in heart, you could still accommodate that, and if everyone had said, no, we're not doing anything, it still could be stopped and things could be rearranged.
Right, the community said, that's not acceptable, and we're not, you know, or the teacher said, I don't think we can do that, yes, but I, my feeling is that I think it would be accepted, but again, that'd be-
Right.
We have to wait and see what happens, right, exactly.
Great, thank you.
Any questions?
No, I mean, I had a chance to talk to Ms. Roxby, she had, she called me today, which I really appreciate, we were able to hash out some of the stuff, and my concern was similar to their concerns, was with, first of all, does the community at Sherman, both the PTA and even some of the parents who might not be part of the PTA-
Right.
-have concerns, and what direction do they want to go? Do they, you know, to me, this is very similar to Stratfield, where that community got together and decided, we wanted to have it go as fast as possible and live in a construction site, and go through those, you know, things you have to go through when that happens, and they did have art on a cart for a while, and things like that. Or do they not? Do they want to go through some other system, saying, putting it off for till next summer, getting everything lined up and whatever, and I think it's very important that Ms. Roxby take this back to the community and have, I think, a meeting in the APR or something, and find out what people, the community there wants, wants to do.
Well, that's what she's doing.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just telling you of my concerns. The other question I had for her was the, what is going to happen with the curriculum? If the administration takes over the library, and that library contains the computer lab, is there effectively not going to be a computer lab for the school? And what is going to be the effect on curriculum? And I'm not sure whether this is made at your level, or whether this is something that is made at the Board of Education's level, or doctor title, but certainly, I think that's got to be looked at. You know, the community may be willing to live with art on a cart, but if there's students that are not going to have computer training for six months, or longer, then I think that's something that they have to look at, so, I think it'd be, you know, I'm appreciative you're going to have that meeting, which I'll probably attend, I'd like to hear what the parents want to say about it, but I think, in order to get this thing rolling so everyone's happy with it, you know, we're going to have to come to some consensus on it.
I agree with you, and, you know, there are things, we'll never have 100%, I think, of anyone accepting anything, and then, and again, with the curriculum, we'll do the best that we can, and knowing that we'll have to have some alternate plans for the curriculum, which we know, which art on a cart does, music on a cart does, library on a cart does, computers on a cart does, absolutely. So we would have to have those, think it out, and actually probably do a curriculum map, so we can see where we can, the projects that have to be done through the curriculum, how can we space them out through the year, knowing that this will have a little bit of limited access to the computers. So we would have to definitely do a curriculum plan for that, and that's something, you know, that's very doable, and, you know, I feel confident that we could do it, not without some planning, certainly, so we'd have to definitely-
Yeah, I agree, no one's, you're not going to get 100% agreement on it, but that's why, you know, it's a great thing about living in democracy, it's what most of people want to do.
Exactly, consensus building-
But the other concern, I just want to make sure, and I know there's controls for this when you do buildings within occupied space, you have to follow certain protocols for keeping particular matters out of the air, and things like that, because, you know, obviously there's students there who have asthma and things like that, so, you know, just make sure that all those protections that are supposed to be there are more in place.
Yes, and staff members too, as well, yes, definitely, so, yeah, we want to keep that in mind, yep. Thank you for listening.
Does anybody have any questions in the audience?
What is going to be the process, or in regards to that schedule? Who's going to make that schedule, or determine that after these meetings?
Well, I would assume after she finishes, or while she's talking to the staff and the parents, that the architects will be in touch with Mr. Fallon and Mr. Kelly, and together they'll figure out what they're going to do based on what the school decides.
Okay.
But they have to keep everything moving as if they're going forward in order to keep on track for doing what they're doing, so, at the moment, the architects.
The architects are going to help create that schedule.
Okay, and I'd just like to ask a question to Mr. Saxel. What is Mr. Fallon doing? Explain to me exactly what TPZ matters we have before us, are they on the calendar currently? What's going on?
I don't know whether or not they are on the-
Where does he stand? Because I had asked him to be here today.
I do not know whether or not they are on the agenda, but I do know that you need to have a complete application before something can be moved to a public car, assuming it needs to go to a public car.
Okay.
And an A2 survey is an integral part of that, and-
Does anybody know in this room, that whether he has a complete package yet?
Yes, he's got it.
Okay, so he does have it.
He's got it.
Is the application on?
We're on the schedule, Rich?
Yeah, that's how you know. They had to have it in by the first order to do that.
June 28.
That's what our meeting is.
Yeah, it's on there.
It means June 28. And does anybody know what the application is for?
Special exception.
It's got to be a special exception, special permit.
I have the application, we're planning it zoning if you want.
Okay, it's just a special exception?
It's for the additions.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's to construct something in the residential area.
I just have one, sorry.
Oh, that's okay, please.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Let's see, I'm just looking that over. You know, very few things in life happen the way you plan, and having backup plans and the ability to be flexible is always positive in life, so-
Are we getting the building permit ourselves, or are we waiting to hire a builder to pull the permit itself?
Build, build. George is going to pull the permit.
George, the builder will ultimately pull it, but we'll have everything in place for him to pull.
So we're going to go through another RFP then, for this project?
No.
The current RFP that we had?
It's just bidding, we bid it, we get the builder, and the builder goes gets his permit, but we're going to have everything ready for him to do.
The builder goes through an RFP process though, right?
He bids it.
He bids it.
He bids it, and then the qualified load bidder, we would then award, and then, I think there might even be a 15-day grace period with him, and then he starts.
When's that bidding going to be done?
The June, we're going to bid June 15th, it'll be done by the end of, it's not even the first week of July, second, maybe first, second week of July, and then we award.
And then he starts going about the permitting process, the whole goal is to have it maybe by August 1st?
Yes.
And then the building start on October 1st, August 1st, as soon as he has his permit?
He would start mobilizing before then, and then he would get the building permit, but what we're doing now is laying the groundwork for him to be able to walk in to Mr. Gilliam's office, he has to go to conservation, TP and Z, all that'll be laid for him so he can just begin the process.
Okay, I just wanted to understand the process.
Okay, I understand, it's complicated. And they have to go to the tax assessor first to make sure they pay their bills. Now you laugh, that's the first step.
I know.
And, okay, any other questions from you?
No, thank you.
Any other public comment? Pam?
I just wanted to say thank you, especially to first lift my stomach, because I know you were very helpful to our committee in helping to move this along, and we appreciate you coming to the architects meeting and hearing our concern and offering to help facilitate things in every way, so, thank you, and thank you for putting this on the agenda this evening.
Rich, Mr. Special?
Just so that everybody's perfectly clear about this, that referred to as HVAC, this is not an air conditioning system, it's an air handling system, and I just don't want anybody to get the impression that it's going to be air conditioned.
It's not, it's not central air, it's almost like having units, it is having units on the roof for a couple-
And that actually is part of the process, where Turner, we sort of did the investigation, we found that the units were going to go on roof, there was going to be 10 of them, and actually, there's going to be columns going through down to new footings, and these are all considerations that come out. Once you start to investigate the building, and the capability of it to support what needs to be done, to put the units on the roof.
Thank you. Any other public comments? I can't see back there, oh, sorry, Eileen.
I just wanted to make sure that, before I go to the parents and the faculty, that I have a clear idea of the timeline, so if Rich or Al could get that to me before, you know, Tuesday, that would be helpful, then I could bring it to the staff on Tuesday and the parents on Wednesday. So if you can give me a timeline, that would be very helpful, because that's, I want to be clear on that, because that seems to be where we got stuck with this project a little bit, so I want to make sure we are clear on the timeline.
Perhaps Mr. Wiles could help with that as well, tying that together.
Can that also be supplied to the Board of Design?
Sure.
Thanks.
Kristin McCarthy-Beggy, hello?
Hi, thank you. I assume this, but I think it's better not to assume things, that cost be considered. I didn't hear that specifically mentioned in terms of any of the plans that are being made for, and I agree that consensus and community input is important, having gone through the Stratfield project, but then the experts looked at the budget and what was doable, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Good point, and probably the only reason we didn't say it is because we've been discussing costs for so much, because this is a particular, a particular problem with this project because of the flood zone, that we have to keep it within a specific cost, so, we're definitely keeping an eye on that. Any other comments?